I'm calling to order this meeting of the Hudson Board of Education for Thursday, December 16th. All those who are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And before I ask the board members for approval of the agenda that is before them, I wanted to announce to those who may not know particularly the guests and the individuals who may be watching this televised version later that Superintendent Bowen Eggbroten has a serious case of laryngitis and will not be speaking during the board meeting. So if folks are wondering why she's not speaking, that would be the reason why, and she's got a number of her administrators that will stand in on her behalf to make the reports this evening. So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion by Lynn.
I second it.
Second by Pat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the next item on tonight's agenda is student recognition, Sandy.
Thank you so much. We are proud to have with us this evening Margot Keeler. She's the St. Croix County Stop Drugs Poster Grand Prize winner. So Margot, if you'd kind of come up by the microphone with me. Oh, Dad's coming with. Good. Good deal. If you've been to our website, you note that we have several winners. There were actually six fourth grade winners, six fifth grade winners, two sixth grade, let me go back again, six fourth grade, six fifth grade, two sixth grade, and one seventh grade winner. And Margot is the grand prize winner of the poster contest. And I know she's brought the original drawing and message, and then you may have seen this also on the calendar as well. And so if you can see, it says, "Drugs are not on my agenda." And then she has a picture of an agenda, and there are things like she's going to make sure she exercises and eats healthy and gets some fresh air. But you can see that she's going to make sure that she does not do drugs and that she's going to keep her body healthy. And so she feels that most of the awards, due to the strong message that she has in her poster, this is one that probably wasn't selected necessarily. I mean, it was a very nice drawing, but not so much the artwork as much as the strong message that she's sharing with us. Margot's a fourth grader at EP Rock, and Mrs. Hamburg was disappointed she couldn't be here, but they have a concert going on as well this evening. So you can see that Margot has mom and dad with her and brother this evening. And so, Margot, we're just very excited to have you here, and we know that you're very proud of your work, and mom and dad are proud of your work. And if you would, I don't know, anyone has a little question for her?
Margot, would you be willing to entertain a question from one of the board members, maybe? Anybody in particular have a question? I do. So, Margot, can you explain to us where the idea came from? I loved the theme.
Um, I don't really know where it came from. I just kind of...
Do you use an agenda?
No.
No, you don't. Okay.
But she does use a planner.
Oh, there you go.
They have their planners for every day that come home with them from school. It has all their things that they need to do. And so I think that was probably part of the inspiration for her theme.
All right. Well, thank you, Margot, for an amazing poster, and thank you, Dad, and Mom, and brother, for coming.
Thank you.[260.82][260.82](applause)
Madam President, can I have a certificate for that?
I do, I bet. Thank you for the reminder. Margot, can I ask you to come forward again? We have a certificate we'd like to present you with.[275.02][275.02](pause)
She has a picture of it in the photo. That's good.
All right, we are now moving into the superintendent's report section of the agenda. The first item of business under that section is the Spring 2011 Board of Education election. Cory?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we're pleased to announce that the district is providing notice that an election will be held in the School District of Hudson on Tuesday, April 5th, 2011. The term of the office for each school board member is three years, beginning on Monday, April 25th, 2011, and ending on April 28th, 2014. The following offices are to be elected and succeed the present incumbents. It's the Office of Board Member Incumbent Lynn Robson and Office of Board Member Incumbent Daniel Chernohoy. Campaign registration statement and a declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 4th, 2011, in the Office of the School District Clerk at 644 Brackey Drive in Hudson, Wisconsin. Also, if there is a need for a primary or if a primary is necessary, that would be held on Tuesday, February 15th, 2011.
Great. Thanks, Cory. It looks like you were going to continue down the list.
I'm just going to continue on if that works for you.
District presentations?
Yes, thank you. We're pleased to share with you two presentations that have recently occurred. First, we'd like to talk about the Minnesota Naturalist Association Annual Conference that was held at Camp St. Croix on November 12th through the 14th. The conference's focus was on life in the River Valley. Rivercrest Elementary was one of the highlighted sites, with a presentation given by Travis Beinger, principal here at Rivercrest, Tracy Habish-Aline and Hoffman Incorporated. The presentation detailed sustainable design and how the building features are incorporated into the student, staff, and community learning about environmental sustainability. Over 30 naturalists attended the presentation, and a tour of Rivercrest Elementary followed. So it sounds like it was a successful event. Secondly, we'd also like to share with you the presentation that Tracy Habish-Aline, representing the school district, as the keynote speaker for the, and bear with me here, the Minnesota Green Schools Building Council. So the United States Green Schools Building Council, the USGBC. And the Minnesota USGBC chapter believes that all children should benefit from a sustainable learning environment. Through this campaign, existing Minnesota schools were encouraged to look for ways to improve their sustainable operations, and all new school construction should be built with "Lead for Schools" as their guide. Hudson was asked to present because of the experience we've had with the construction of Rivercrest Elementary and the impact building a green school has had across our district. And the presentation highlighted our partnership with Hoffman and Anderson Windows. So, again, we appreciate Tracy representing the school district. And next, I'll move on to the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association Award of Excellence. The Hudson School District received the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association 2010 Spectrum Award of Excellence for our communications on our work on bringing HSD 2025 alive. The work was reviewed by the awards committee, and items that were included, if you remember the articles, we had two articles that represented our work, and one was in the Wisconsin Association of School Board School News publication, as well as the Wisconsin Association of School or the WASCD highlighter publication. Multiple community presentations on the progress of implementing HSD 2025 have occurred over the last few years, and highlights of our success with HSD 2025 implementation and the Hudson Star Observer superintendent's columns. Hudson received a perfect score by the panel of judges who indicated and included public relations and graphic design professionals. So professionals in the field gave Hudson a perfect score in relation to this award. And Tracy's here tonight to help present the award to the board chair, and we really need to give much of the credit to Tracy Habish-Aline in our communications specialist role, because she's done a phenomenal job representing Hudson in the work that's been done with promotion of our bringing HSD 2025 alive. So Tracy, if you'd like to come up and present, Madam President, with the award. Thank you, Tracy. Next, I'd like to share with you, on the agenda you'll see, the next item is County Market Stuff a Truck Food Drive. And we'd like to share with you the partnership between the Hudson Staff Wellness Committee, Hudson High School Student Council, the United Way St. Croix Valley, and Hudson County Market. Our staff and students did a phenomenal job this year with the Stuff a Truck Food Drive this month. According to Steve Solomon, the high school math teacher and student council advisor, and Dave Olson, Hudson County Market Manager, "We surpassed our district goal of 10,000 pounds and were able to supply our local food pantry with nearly 13,000 pounds of food items." We also had several school teams that added a creative touch by building sculptures and donated food items as part of the United Way Weekend Campaign in conjunction with Stuff a Truck. This success is one of the many ongoing examples of the generosity, pride, and community spirit of our Hudson School District students and staff, and we just seem to continue to demonstrate that time and time again. So we're very proud of that work and the donations that occurred. Lastly, we'd like to share just briefly information about our United Way staff contributions. To give you a bit of a sense for how we did this year, we're going to share with you how we did in 2008 and 2009. In 2008, we had 113 staff donating for a total of $13,188. We were able to improve on that the next year in 2009 at 152 donors, staff donors totaling And this year in 2010, we had a new high of 182 donors with a grand total of $22,140.50. So we're very proud of our staff continuing to donate more and more every year. And we want to thank our staff and everyone who found a way to donate.
Great, thanks Cory. I'm going to ask you to go back. I know you saved one of the most important items for last, and that would be the Hudson Education Foundation Grant Awards.
Thank you, and we're very proud of that as well. The Hudson Education Foundation did recently provide their grant awards, and we were awarded a total of $12,455 to fund five different grants in the school district. And we really want to take a moment to thank the Education Foundation of Hudson for supporting the district's efforts in increasing achievements for all of our students. So, again, a very heartfelt thank you to the Hudson Education Foundation.
Great. Any questions for Cory? Thank you very much for that report. We are into the reports section of the agenda, and the first item in that section is the enrollment projections with Hazel Reinhardt. And Tim, I think you're going to introduce Ms. Reinhardt.
Yes, I am. As Ms. Reinhardt's making her way forward here, I'll give a brief introduction. Ms. Reinhardt is the president and founder of Hazel Reinhardt Consulting Services. She's taught in the executive education programs at the Media Management Center, which is a joint program of the Kellogg School of Management and the Medill School of Journalism, Northwestern University, Evanston, Illinois. She heads the Media Management Center's market research team, consults with media companies worldwide on audience and advertising, and conducts demographic analysis for a variety of organizations and businesses. Prior to starting her consulting company, she held several key management positions with Cowell's Media, and she has worked as a state demographer. Dr. Reinhardt provided enrollment projection data to the school district, the district facilities task force in 2004, and she's also provided updated enrollment projection data in 2007, 2008. Dr. Reinhardt has earned her BA or MA and her PhD all from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Reinhardt.
Thank you. Well, it's a pleasure to be here again. I am understanding, can you hear me? Have done work, as has been pointed out several times, for the Hudson School District, and coming to understand it better and better and better, as one does as you get closer and have more experience with the district. What I'm going to share this evening represents the current look at the school district and sort of what the future is likely to be. And we have to remind ourselves that this look now is based in a period of time that none of us anticipated or expected to experience. So it's a different look than was presented a couple of years ago. The projections are somewhat lower. The lowest projections this time compared to the lowest projections last time are only about seven and a half percent lower. So it's not dramatically different. And the biggest difference is in the assumptions about migration in the district. The kindergarten assumptions are different in their timing, but interestingly, they're virtually the same within five, seven students of the last time in 2018, 19, and this time versus 2020, 21. So it's not the kindergarten assumptions that are making the difference, but simply the rate of migration. So Diana's going to help me and move this along, and we'll try to go through this. And I'll be looking at the screen up ahead of me. Just wanted to clarify that many times, I think, people think of projections as somehow looking into a crystal ball or something like that. Really looking at very distinct pieces of information, data, that help us get some purchase on the future. And characteristics of the community being one of those, and I always restate that St. Croix County, Wisconsin, is part of the Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan statistical area. It just happens to be in a different state. So it's part of that socioeconomic conglomerate, if you will. Then we have some things that we can look at in current enrollment that are very important, and one is the distribution of students by grade. That can tell us a great deal. We're going to look at resident births, which are predictors of kindergarten, five and six years in the future. Looking at education choices, which is not a big factor in the state of Wisconsin. Public school districts pretty much capture their residents, which is very different from Minnesota. And then at housing type, and what's really important in housing type is single-family detached units. Okay? Let's take a look at the next slide. Quickly, an executive summary. This is a school district that has had very rapid growth in the past 10 years, and increasing by 28%. But I think what I really want to underscore, and have you pause and reflect on, is that even during this recession, annual increase was about 2% a year. I mean, this is phenomenal, that you had that kind of increase in these very difficult times. And then the growth resulted primarily from net in-migration of school-aged children, and secondarily from larger kindergarten classes. Now, the larger kindergarten classes may be related to migration earlier, of parents coming in with preschool children or having children once they're resident in the district. But if we look at enrollment itself, it seems very, it's primarily driven by that net in-migration of school-aged children. There is built-in growth momentum in the current distribution of students, and that is a very, very important point. And that's simply because the elementary grades are larger than the middle school or high school grades. So as they move in time, as they age and move through, even if kindergarten were to be held constant, you would have enrollment growth because of that built-in distribution currently of the grades. As I mentioned, you have a very high capture rate. You capture 88.3% of your district residents. And these projections show an increase in enrollment, and of course, naturally, that will need to be accompanied by residential growth. You're going to have to have more housing units as well. Here we can see the change that has occurred in 10 years. Almost 1,200 more students in 10 years. It's really phenomenal. Next. And here we see the numbers, which speak for themselves. When we look at school enrollment and look at change, we can apply the same principles as we apply to any demographic analysis. And one of them is natural increase, which in a school enrollment or a school population is measured by the size of the fall kindergarten class compared to the previous year's grade 12. And if that fall class is always larger, we have natural increase. If it's smaller, we have natural decrease. And of course, you have natural increase, except for three years. One of them is very, very close to zero, but you had a little on and off there. And then net migration has been positive. And the next slide shows us that. The column to the left shows the numerical increase year over year, and it was only at the sort of worst part of the recession, from the fall of 2007 to the fall of 2008, that you had a minus 14 students. But you'll notice it was not due to net migration, it was due to the size of those cohorts. And if you look at the side, let's go back and look at the net migration side, I just want to call your attention to what I think are very strong numbers here in these recession years. But they are not of the size, and of course, what was influencing, thinking last time around, was that 263 and 113 and 124, which were really boom years. Next, please. Let's take a look at the competition, if you will. Non-public school enrollment increased. Another way of saying this is growth benefited both the enrollment of the public schools and the non-public schools. However, the district enrolls a slightly smaller percentage of its school-age population in traditional non-public schools, the brick and mortar, compared to the state of Wisconsin. And it has fewer, a smaller percentage of its students homeschooled than the state of Wisconsin. Open enrollment is not a big factor in Wisconsin. As you can see here, it's less than 1% of your school-age population or enrollment. This past, the current year, you had 34 students, non-resident students attending, and you had 36 resident students who are attending somewhere else. So it's a wash, and very, very tiny numbers. Charter schools, no record of any residents attending charter schools, and seven kids in the HSED, which is a kind of the Wisconsin super version of getting a GE Day. I carefully read its website, and this is supposedly better than a GED. So that tells us that I'm always interested in what's happened to the district's school-age population, and you can see it's increased. But you'll notice it's percentage increase and number was smaller than that of the public schools. And what that means, which is really interesting, is the district's capture rate actually went up. And again, in 10 years, a percentage point in capture rate is significant. Significant. Next. Okay, that's kind of the one part of the analysis. Now let's start to focus on what the, what school enrollment tells us itself. It's a predictor of growth. Kindergarten increased in that 10-year period from 296 students to 459. With the kindergarten of 2010-11, that 459, the largest kindergarten ever in the Hudson School District. Okay? And that leads me to believe that the largest grade 12 probably has not yet entered this school district. So you've missed one entire enrollment cycle of up and down. This is just all, all up. Next slide, please, and we'll see these numbers. You can see across the top line, the kindergarten. And then if you look in the rightmost column, you'll see that 459, 422 compared to graduating the grade 12, 381. So you can see that you have, on average, if you average these for elementary, middle school, and high school, you have a larger average class size at the elementary. Next, please. Okay. The future, as we sort of prepare ourselves. I was struck with the, with the young girl who won this award, and you ask, "How did you get the inspiration?" And I think it's often hard to know how an idea came to one. Well, this is not about how ideas come to one, but the kinds of things you keep in your head as you're looking toward the future. And some of these things are trends that where we have very high confidence. We know that the population is aging. And we know that it's aging because the largest generation we have, the baby boomers, we know that the leading edge will turn 65 as of January 1st, 2011, and we will have a huge run-up of people becoming elderly. And we know all the old jokes, you know, 70 is the new 50, and all of that kind of stuff. But it will take the, you know, population of the state of Wisconsin from about 13.5% 65-plus to about 18. I mean, that's significant. You're looking down the road into a world in which a fifth of the population will be over 65. I mean, it's as though there's almost a multiplication of older people. And the significant, there are many, many things that are significant about it, but probably what's most significant is we don't really know what kind of world we're going to have with so many people being older. That will in turn result in a decrease in the school-age population per household, a shift in the size of key adult age groups that will affect housing, and we'll take a look at this, but really, the significance of this is just to remind us that the 10 years we're looking forward into will be different than the 10 years we just left. Now, all of that said, some geographies will be different from others. Some will continue to have a younger population, and looking at all of the projections made by the state of Wisconsin for St. Croix County, this will remain a much younger place than the state as a whole, some of the other areas around. We anticipate fertility to continue to be low, that is, the number of children born to a woman will continue to be low, and that we know that we're going to continue to have enrollment cycles. And I think what's especially important in a school district that is growing is that all the media talks about what's happening to most school districts, which is decline. And that can have a powerful effect on people when they hear that and then think it applies to them when it really doesn't. So something to be alert to. Next, please. Now, some of the things that are unknown to us. The duration of this weak housing market and tight credit. Okay? And that affects population mobility. Because when houses were appreciating rapidly, it was not uncommon for families to be in a house five, six years and then move up because they had acquired a lot of equity in that time and could buy a bigger house, or better house, or more expensive house, or whatever. And of course, the other thing is it affects housing supply because we have a number of homes on the market or in the process of foreclosure or close to going into default that we just don't know how long it's going to take to absorb them. And there's no one that knows. If we look at, two years ago, people said, "Oh, 2010, this will be over." Well, it wasn't over in 2010. And now the experts sort of say, "Well, maybe 2013." So we just don't know. And the significance of that is that it's arbitrary then to say, for me to say, "Okay, we're going to use this rate, and then in 2014, we're going to double something because we think it's, that's the year it's going to change." You don't know. And then economic recovery also affects both that domestic mobility. How many people will move, in this case, to the Twin Cities metropolitan area? will move, in this case, to the Twin Cities metropolitan area, and immigration from abroad. And these things are, it's jobs, it all comes down to jobs. Because we live in a part of the world, all we have to do is go outside. People don't come here just to hang out. You have an economic reason to be here. And so jobs are really critical. And this economy has been sluggish, and has, you know, for several years. So that's got to change. Okay? Now, we're going to approach projections, as I have before, using two different methods, a cohort survival method, which is the traditional way of projecting population, and school enrollment, and then a housing unit method. And I'm going to use a traditional one here, not a housing start method, but the components here in front of you. And if we can take a look at the next one, we'll talk about some of the factors. Resident live births. Wisconsin, as you will note here, has had an increase in births as, as we came toward two thousand and into the two thousands. And it had a little dip here in two thousand nine and eight, which is what happened in the U.S. as well. The recession did depress births. It also had a depressing effect on births in St. Croix County. And in the component parts of this district, the city of Hudson, the North Hudson Village, townships that make up this district. So we can see it all followed the trend that, that people made a decision to delay having another child in these economic times. Now, you see, two thousand nine, the state of Wisconsin has not released the data yet. When I talked to them, they said, well, you know, it doesn't come in from other states like Minnesota. Yet Minnesota has released its two thousand nine, so I don't think that's really the reason. However, if we look at the number of births in the county that occurred in the state of Wisconsin and look at two thousand nine versus two thousand eight, I have estimated what two thousand nine looked like. Okay, let's take another. Now, from those births, I'm going to create a kindergarten pool, which is adjusting those birth years to fit the September first for enrollment in kindergarten. So about one-third are born six years earlier, two-thirds five years earlier. Next. I constructed the pool, then based on county births, and you see the percentage that Hudson was of the county. Couple of things kind of important here. Actually, the percentage went up this year, in two thousand ten-eleven, which is interesting. And the last three years, it's really, those percentages are pretty tight. And that gives confidence that some combination of them probably will be what holds in the next, at least three, four years. Okay? Now, I wanted to get projections to go out ten years rather than five. I mean, anybody can make five-year projections. To get them out to ten is a little trickier. Getting too casual here. And don't let this coughing distress you because it's a, it's a byproduct of a medication I take. It's not anything, which is annoying, but that's... What we're looking at here is the state of Wisconsin's projections of, I'm going to say births, but that's technically not true. It's their zero to five-year-old population, which I have made an estimate of the birth. And then I looked at what actual births were, and births are approximately fourteen point one percent lower than the state projected. So I'm going to take those and lower that for five years by that fourteen point one percent, which is that, what that twelve eighty-three represents. The one thousand one hundred probably should be just slightly higher. That's, that's kind of my estimate, a projection of where two thousand ten will come in. So I've reduced, and these are the state's projections made in two thousand eight or released in two thousand eight. So you can see that, that everyone anticipated a little faster growth than, than what has materialized. So I'm going to use these to get me out to, to two thousand, so I can project to two thousand twenty. Okay, let's look at the next one. And so I took thirty-eight point two percent of the pool, and then thirty-nine point four percent for a low and a high, and those are averages of, of those years, two and three and year averages, applying both to the pool and then to those projected births going forward. Now, what is interesting, when I mentioned that these projections are not that dissimilar from the last round of projections, the difference was, is that in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, under the high, I'm projecting five oh one, and in the other one, I had five hundred and ten as of two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So, and a very similar thing has occurred, four eighty-six and the other was four ninety-four. So the intervening years may be slightly different, but we're ending up at about the same spot. So these are the kindergarten projections. Now, in each case, they're, you know, four fifty-nine. Now, you'll notice that in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, projecting that those kindergarten numbers go down. The reason for that is that decline in the number of births. Okay? Just so we understand that, we're tracking that, it's, it's nothing else. Okay, let's look at the next one. The other thing, of course, is migration. What's always important and really drives enrollment growth is the net in migration at K five or at the elementary level. And high school migration usually has in it the movement of students from non-public to public schools. And you actually have two places that students move. One is from six to seven, in the seventh grade, and the other in the ninth. So that, that's what is affecting the middle school and high school, which look somewhat stronger than, than the elementary in the last couple of years. But again, you're, you know, thirty-four, twenty-four, still strong numbers. Now, these numbers are going to be converted by grade to survival rates, and let's take a look at the next slide. Well, you'll see the detail. You have a large net inflow between grade, grade five and, oh, five and six, not six and seven, five and six, and then eight and nine, and an outflow from eleven to twelve. And even that is not very high at the eleven to twelve. Okay? Two assumptions on this. The low is the average survival rate of the past two years, so it's really a fairly low one. And then I wanted something higher, so I took the high, the average of the past two years, plus in that, the fall of two thousand four to the fall of two thousand five. So that is a higher year, but not nearly as high as that two hundred and sixty-three. It's about one hundred and thirteen. So just to get those survival rates up a bit. And here you'll see the survival rates that are being used. So what does this translate into? From kindergarten to first grade, you're getting nearly a two percent bump under the low one. The high would just turns out not to be as high, just a fluke there. One to two, the low is, has just a slight loss, probably, you know, it'll cost you a student or two. The other one has about a one and a half percent increase. Then about, between three and four, from grades two to three, and you can see the go, that how the, the higher one is a little higher at these grades. And then you see the big increase, eight to nine, about eight percent, eight to nine percent, you know, pickup in students there. Five to six, you're going four to five percent. Otherwise, they're, they're fairly small increases. Now, so this is, this is again, a fairly modest look in that in migration. All right, let's take another one. Now, what we're doing here is combining these assumptions, the low K with the low migration, the high K with the low migration, and the low and the high, and the high and the high. And of course, the lowest projection is a function of the low K and, and the low migration, and the highest is the high K and the high migration. And you see, if you're looking at out five years, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, you're going from fifty-four hundred to six thousand to about sixty-two hundred. And if you're looking out the full ten years, you're at about sixty-four hundred to about sixty-seven hundred, if you think about that. And then let's take a look at what that means by how your schools are configured. In the five years, and the reason I'm focusing on five years, it would take something pretty extraordinary for this not to be realized. Because most of these students are in school. Only the K five could, could be, but the, but the six to eight, these are already kids in school, and certainly at the nine, twelve. Well, you look at the increase from the low to the high, you go from almost two hundred students to two hundred and seventy at the elementary, from a hundred and fourteen to a hundred and, almost a hundred and sixty at the middle school, and from two hundred and seventy-five approximately to three hundred and twenty-five at the high school. So you see, again, pretty significant increases. And here you see it at the two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and then at the two thousand twenty, twenty-one, of how this shows. I'm, I'm just, it's kind of breathtaking what, how, how that middle school and high school, how those numbers increase. And as I say, those, those children are in school. Okay? Now, so that's the cohort survival method. Now let's take a look at the housing unit method and, and what it can tell us. The housing unit method does not project by grade. It just gives us a total number. And I wanted to show you some background information. The data you're going to see are the Minnesota portion of the metropolitan area. And there are a couple of things that emerge there. Number one, that the population twenty and over does not grow as rapidly in the decade we're now in than the one we immediately left. And that has everything to do with, of where the baby boom population is versus Gen X versus the Gen Y. We're actually going to have a decrease in the number of people thirty-five to fifty-four years of age, which is kind of the move-up population. And then we had this huge increase in the population sixty-five and over, that sixty percent of the increase in the population age twenty and over between two thousand ten and two thousand twenty is accounted by the increase in sixty-five plus, baby boomers aging. Okay? Let's look at the next one, and there you can see the numbers. And it's really dramatic, just a way of saying that what we're entering is not quite what we just experienced. All right, let's take a look now. I mentioned this before, the type of unit is very, very important. Single-family detached is, is where it's at. We've had two housing studies, which I've been involved with in this district, and you have for your new single-family units, one of the highest yields of school-age children I've seen anywhere in three states. You really have a young population with children who have decided to move here. It's, it's really dramatic. And then new units yield more students than older units. And even when a unit turns over, the yield tends to go down unless the unit is, let's say, five, seven years old. It's sort of the, think about it, it's about floor plan and amenities. A house that was built in the nineteen seventies attracts a different person than a house built in two thousand four. Okay, it's, the two thousand four usually has more square footage, it has a master bedroom suite, it has probably an island in the kitchen. I don't, you know, you know what, if you go around and look at houses, they just are different. But, but you just, you have a history of attracting families with school-age kids. Okay? Now let's take a look at what this looks like. I estimate, based on the two thousand nine survey, survey, use of the St. Croix County property tax rolls, and I maintain there is no better source of data than the property tax roll. Because units don't get missed. Okay? The assessor is, it's, it's the assessor's job to see that, that every piece of property is, is taxed. And there were, and in St. Croix County, single-family and townhomes are lumped together in the same category. So I think there are nine thousand two hundred. Now, there are more households than that because this is not counting apartments and it's not counting mobile homes. I'm looking at the kinds of units that really yield kids. I'm making an assumption here, what if, think about it, what if there were fifteen hundred additional single-family townhomes by two thousand twenty, twenty-one? What if there were seventeen hundred? What if there were two thousand? What if there were twenty-two hundred? This past decade, you were closer to twenty-five, twenty-six hundred. Okay, so just give you, the, all of these have a little slower growth. I'm assuming here, a school-age child at zero point six five, which is a healthy rate, but given that your new units have brought on like point nine-two, one point four, I mean, some of them have just been incredible. So I'm saying, based on the past, you're likely to, again, have units that attract families with children. And then I increased your capture rate just slightly to eighty-eight point five, it was eighty-eight point three. I think it will continue to go, go up. Because you, you would need to have a pretty dramatic expansion of non-public schools, which is very costly, to build buildings and the like. And, or you'd have to have a charter school that would come in, or you'd have to have something pretty dramatic. So adding fifteen hundred units would bring the total single-family townhouse unit count to ten thousand seven hundred. I then multiply that by zero point six five, and I get the six thousand nine fifty-five. Those are residents of the district. And then I take that, multiply that by eighty-eight point five, and I get six thousand one hundred fifty-five in the Hudson Public Schools. Then I added forty non-residents. You know, who knows? Could be forty-five. I, it's, I don't think it'll be a large number to get the sixty-one ninety-five. And then you can see how, as you add more units with the same assumptions, that enrollment goes from just under sixty-two hundred to just about sixty-six hundred. Okay? Now, we can run that exercise in reverse to see how many units we need on the cohort survival. So if we could take a look at the next one. Here we have, the top is just what you looked at, and then the bottom four rows show the cohort survival, numbers translated into units. So what do, what do we know? We know that we, we need, we need about seventeen hundred units, seventeen hundred, somewhere in there, plus a little bit, to get us to the low kindergarten, low migration projection, because we get the sixty-three-ten versus the sixty-three-seventy-seven. And the highest projection, the highest cohort survival, we really need that twenty-two hundred additional units, twenty-two fifty, somewhere in there. So it gives us a range of how much development is likely to have to occur to use, to yield these numbers. Now, what else could change? Well, the, the school-age child per unit, I, as I said before, I don't think your capture rate is going to change. It's not going to go down significantly, and it, and it can't hardly go up significantly. It, it might creep up a bit more, I don't know. But it gives us some range here now. So people always say now, well, what number, you know, would you really select? At this point in time, if you'll notice, there's not much difference here in the projection out to two thousand twenty of the high kindergarten, low migration, or the low kindergarten, high migration. They're fundamentally at, at sixty-five hundred. They're fundamentally at, at sixty-five-hundred total enrollment. And that's probably, I'd say that's a reasonable number to target out there. You know, it might come in a little lower, but I don't think significantly so. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, anyone has about this. Questions for Dr. Reinhardt?
Madam President, Dr. Reinhardt, I'm wondering if you can explain how you measure the migration number? How is that measured?
Okay, remember the chart that showed enrollment? Diane, can you find that? The one at school and going backwards, it's... Back, no, back, back. Well, back, back some more, back two or three more. More, 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 more. There. Migration is a measure, and it really is a very good measure, because you capture such a high proportion of the district's school-age population. Migration is an indirectly derived estimate. Mortality is very low among school-age children. So if you start out at that very top, you had a kindergarten of two-hundred-and-ninety-six, and the following year, you had three-hundred-and-thirteen students. This, this population has aged one year. The difference between three-thirteen and two-ninety-eight is the assumed net migration. That just continues on. And that's why you will see, let's take, for example, if we look at grade eight, it's easier, yeah, three-hundred-and-thirty to three-hundred-and-sixty-five. See, that, that's estimated as the net migration. Now, quite, now we have to recognize that, that those students were probably resident in the district, but they are a net in migration to the Hudson Schools. These other, other children may not be residents to the district, but that's how it's measured, based on the assumption that this population will survive, and the numbers are small, we could run the probability of mortality, and it, it wouldn't show any losses. So that the change you see represents new students to the, to the public schools. Now, if a student moves to the Hudson School District and never enrolls in the public schools, we don't capture them in this method. Yes?
Couple of questions. So when you're talking about the capture rate, you're actually talking about students that are in the...
In, reside in the district.
Versus students that are going to private schools, or...
Yes, primarily private school.
Losing them to open enrollment, or...
Yeah. It's, it's based on that estimate of the number of students in the district, and your enrollment is what percentage of that.
How does that compare with other districts similar, comparable in size to Hudson?
Well, this is where the state you're in makes a difference. This is, this is a, different communities have different religious compositions. So if you're in a community that has a large Roman Catholic population, or a large Missouri Synod Lutheran population, you will probably have a higher percentage going to private schools, because both of those denominations have a long history of operating private schools, prokeel schools. If, if those populations are smaller in your community, then, and that's what these numbers would show, because you have both a Lutheran and a Catholic school in this district, then it's a smaller percentage. And you see Wisconsin, it's, you know, a higher percentage than you have here. Open enrollment is not a factor. Now, if you go west across the river, this is such an unbelievably high capture rate, I haven't seen it in the metro area. It's fairly typical in Minnesota, we have districts in the metro area with capture rates of sixty-five percent. And a huge, really huge capture rate would be eighty-two, eighty-three percent. Because open enrollment and charter schools are just taking phenomenal numbers of students, moving them around to different districts. So this is very high.
Okay. Another question I have. I'm just curious about how these factors weigh into your study. For example, gas prices. You know, we're, we're seeing gas prices now at three dollars, and, and given, you know, where we are in relationship to the Twin Cities, where a lot of our workforce goes, how does that fit in?
Well, actually, you are very close. You are much closer to jobs than the western suburbs in the metro. And maybe to your benefit, in the last two and a half months, I did projections for Shakopee and for Waconia. Waconia's in Carver County to the, to the west, and Shakopee in Scott County, south. Waconia, I, I think is, gas prices will make a much bigger impact there than they will on you, I mean, you're not very far from jobs, you really aren't. Now, I don't mean to trivialize this, because if we saw the last time that gas prices got to three dollars, y'all know where North Branch is? Up in thirty-five. Really affected enrollment in North Branch. But you're not that far from jobs, you really aren't.
Another question, I, I know a while back, we had a discussion, not when you were here, but as a board, regarding potential development sites that were out there. And so when you talk about twenty-two-hundred units potentials, and I guess my question is, what is the potential for growth in, in our district?
Actually, you have more than that, if...
Do we?
Yeah, you could, because, what starts to happen when there's demand is that communities change their zoning. You know, but when there's, when there's demand, then they accommodate more units.
So you don't see that as a limitation?
I don't see that as a limitation, not in these numbers, no. No. The way it plays to be, is, you know, I don't know who's holding what land right now, and how much debt they're carrying on. All of those things make a difference, of what price you buy it at, how long you can hold it, how, how, how soon you ask for higher density than what you're currently zoned for, or what, or the current plan that you submitted. See, a lot of these things, developer will, will do a plan, but that's really all it is. I mean, until they've actually turned some ground, it isn't real. And what we're seeing, incidentally, to, to bring housing, to make housing more affordable, we're seeing smaller lots, we're seeing less square footage, and we're seeing less amenity. That is, we're taking tile out, we're taking out granite, granite countertops, things like this, which will reduce the cost of, of a unit by sometimes thousands of dollars. So that's what we see.
One last question. What is, what is the average growth rate you're projecting over the next ten years?
You know, I didn't actually calculate that, did anybody calculate that?
I know you talked about two percent originally, is what we've been experiencing.
Well, I mean, when you think about the couple of years we've been through...
Right.
That's, that's phenomenal. But see, again, the reason, Waconia managed that. Shakopee even a little more, it's a little better location, transportation, or, you know, but, so, the, the growing districts manage to hold growth better than some of the, the other ones.
Thank you.
Other board members with questions?
Madam President, just, Dr. Reinhardt, I know you mentioned that Hudson has a dramatically high number of households with young children moving in here, and is that, is the point-six-five?
That's high, that's a, that's a pretty high. The state of Wisconsin is projecting like point-four-oh statewide. So that's high. But, but again, what could, what, what would make that lower? Well, if the number of units built, the ratio between single-family detached and town homes changed dramatically, because townhomes, this is just an interesting quirk, the number of school-age children, the yield in single, single-family detached, really varies from district to district. The yield in townhomes does not vary from district to district, or state to state, nor for apartments. It's, it's just a fascinating thing, that a town, what it says, it doesn't matter if you're in Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, the townhome population has a more similar profile than the single family. That the single family, and some of it has, is a reflection of the price of the unit. There, a lot of things play into it, but, but when I'm, I'll just give you some examples, you were running, your, your lowest is, has been zero-point-eight-four. The high I've seen, and now we've done this in, in about thirty school districts, so we have fairly good sense, the highest I've seen anywhere else was zero-point-seven-two. And you run, some of your developments here were over one child, one school-age child per unit were, were coming in. I mean, this is just...
So does that, I guess, you know, and you, I think you said, Dr. Reinhardt, that the statewide average is, is point-four, four-oh or something? So does it, does it concern you at all that our number is such an outlier?
No, the reason is, is this, the size of your population is new, you're a, you are a young community, relatively speaking. Now, Hudson has, has a long history on the river, but the size you are, you're relatively young. What drives those numbers down is that you need a substantial proportion of sixty-five-plus. You need a large, older population, which is not going to have school-age children. And the interesting thing that's happening, you know, ten years ago, I would have said, oh, the population over fifty, fifty-five, but such a large proportion of people are having children at forty, that they still have school-age kids at fifty-five and almost sixty in the household. I, I would say, you know, if I look at the profile of this school district versus others that I have worked in, and I've worked in now over a hundred school districts, so I've seen a lot, is that the location of this school district and the kind of people attracted here have been families with school-age children. This has not been a community that has attracted retirees particularly, or young singles. It's attracted families with school-age children. And I would envision that certainly to last another, I, I can't, it's hard for me to imagine that this would become a hotspot for singles. And I, and yes, it could attract more retirees, but, you know, I don't, I don't really see that either.
Just, and just one, one last, if I may, on the, on the same subject, actually. Now, you mentioned, I think, Shakopee and Waconia as, as other districts that are kind of similar in our profile.
Yeah, you're larger.
We're larger.
Well, Shakopee is, is also good size, Waconia's a little smaller.
And, and are you using sort of a similar number there, Dr. Reinhardt?
I didn't use a similar number, but what I checked is to, to see what those results were, what they looked like, and I found them in line. Because I have done enrollment projections in New Richmond, here, River Falls, the like, so I, but you want to, you gain confidence, at least I gain confidence, when I see somewhat similar districts, and these are all, you know, you're not really a third-ring suburb. Waconia is a third-ringer, you're not really a third ring, you're too, too near to be a third-ring suburb. But when you see similar results of districts that have grown rapidly in the last ten years, and then you see kind of similar things happening, you say, well, that suggests that, that there is some internal logic.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
And then, just to say, there, you know, there are all kinds of crazy things, you know, if the state of Wisconsin and the state of Minnesota get into disagreements on taxes and, you know, various other things that might discourage people from working in one state and living, those are all things that, who knows? You know, what could happen.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Madam President, I have a couple of follow-up questions. Dr. Reinhardt, on the capture rate, when, as the economy recovers, do you see more, do you see that capture rate changing with more students gravitating towards private school? I mean, or is it a function of...
In some districts, yes. The reason I don't think it will have that same impact here is as follows. Non-public enrollments have been moving up just as the public school enrollment. So these schools have to be approaching their physical capacities. And that means to have more students, they have to build more classrooms, build another school. And financing a private school is a big, big job these days. And I have to know, I, I just completed work for a private school, and with tuition at seven thousand dollars a year, and estimated that if it can't reach twelve-hundred, it'll run a twenty-three-million-dollar deficit. By what it's going to take to build that school and, and operate. So I'm just saying, you know, maybe you can add a classroom, maybe, but if you, it's an expensive venture to, to build something. So I think that's a, that's a limiting factor.
Okay, one more question. Diane mentioned or asked you a question on housing units and the required housing units to sustain, or to support that growth. How does that number take into consideration the existing inventory on the market? Or how, I'm not sure I understand how that's factored in.
It doesn't. And, and, and I have to tell you, I do not know how many units are vacant at this point, or in danger of being vacant. What we, this will end, what we're going through, I mean, we will, it will end, we will come out somewhere. If you look at the size of the population of Gen Y, who will be maturing, I mean, they're eighteen years and on, they will need to be housed in the next ten years. It's not like we don't have people who will need housing. So at some point, this will, will be absorbed. What we don't know is how many of these units will remain owner-occupied, how many will have some other, that's what we don't know. We were, we were driven in the last ten years to increase the, the percentage of people who were homeowners, and that, that bubble sort of burst. But...
Thank you.
Go ahead, Diane. I have a question to clarify something. You were talking about the townhouse and the single-family home, the, the, the single-family home, would that brings about more children?
Absolutely, absolutely. The difference, your townhomes, from everything I've seen everywhere else, yield about zero-point-two-two school-age children per unit, compared to the zero-point-eight-four and on. I mean, it's huge, huge difference. And that zero-point-two-two, I don't care what district we look at, state here in the upper Midwest. So it just says that the kind of person who moves to a townhome is very similar versus the person who moves to a single-family, you know, there can be a young family, can be a middle, middle life, can be older... a middle, middle life, can be older and have more high school, you know, that, that varies.
The other thing is that I agree with you in the migration in our area, is, I feel that, oh, we migrated in here sixteen years ago with six children in school, so, and down the block was another family had four children that came in the same year, so I, I see that there's this very much of migration. Now, we kind of slowed down in the last two years, but you said there still was-
It's still, it's still high.
-the increase of 2.2% in, in the place, so, um, I, I feel it's migration more than, along with the few, the births of those families. And that's the way I have seen is that the, we come in with four kids, boom, not just one.
That's, that's right.
So, so it's, and I don't think it, I don't think it has changed either.
No, I did, the, the numbers would say it hasn't dramatically changed. It's a popular place for families with children.
Okay. Just one observation, Dr. Reinhardt, and then I'll open it up one last time for questions, although I think we're, we're slowing down. You know, because you did two different methodologies to look at the projections, the survival rate, I think it is, and then the, the housing unit methodology, even in the housing method, the housing unit methodology that you used on the lowest end, that projected student population was lower than the low kindergarten, low migration number at about 61, 50 student population.
61, 90.
Observationally, that's 700 students more than we are today. So, you know, part of it for me was just to go to the end and say, you know, regardless of how conservative or aggressive we want to be, I think that the short version of the story for me out of this report is, there will be growth, and we will have to decide how we're going to address the growth that will be there.
Absolutely, there will be growth.
Okay. So, any final questions for Dr. Reinhardt?
Oh, I'll make a comment on behalf of the superintendent. You know, whether looking at the low or the high projections, you know, it certainly points to more than the middle school and the high school can hold capacity-wise. The, you know, and looking at those projections over the next ten years, and then the next steps would be for January, for the January board meeting to compare enrollment projections and capacities of our buildings.
Very good, thank you, Tim, and thank you, Dr. Reinhardt.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item under the reports section of the agenda is a report out on the November 30 Board Work Session that was held at the District Administrative Service Centers. So, the board did meet on, on November 30th, and we, we talked about the budgeting process that we'll use going forward for the school year 2011-12. The district presented some information for us to consider in terms of projections, and we talked about the process. The outcome of that discussion is that the administrative team anticipates bringing forward a budget for our consideration at the March board meeting with final decisions to be made in the April board meeting. Did I miss anything, Tim? No?
No, I think you've got it.
All right, so, the, we are now into the section under topics for action, and the first item, I think, Corey, you're going to make the recommendation.
Thank you. Madam President, the superintendent recommends the appointment of Financial Services Director Tim Erickson as the deputy clerk for the spring 2011 school board election, with secretarial assistance provided by Executive Administrative Assistant Diane Radell.
Okay. With that recommendation, is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the recommendation made by superintendent on the appointment of deputy clerk for the spring election.
I'll second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Dan. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. The next item under topics for action is the 2011-12 course proposal, Sandy.
Thank you. This evening, I have four course proposals to bring before you. The first one is digital electronics. This is the third in the sequence of Project Lead the Way. The first course we offered two years ago was Intro to Engineering Design. This year, the course that we're offering for PLTW is Principles of Engineering, and this is followed by then Digital Electronics. This sequence of three is required in that sequence, and then there's one more course that we have some, some decisions to make on which is, will be the fourth and final course, but these three are required in the sequence for Project Lead the Way, again, pre-engineering course. This one is focused a lot on logic and circuits, and you can also see, when we presented to the Learning and Program Committee, we looked at all of our course fees, we have several in the Art Department, Family and Consumer Science, and currently some in Tech Ed. We have not done it so far in Project Lead the Way, but just the, the use of consumables, we are recommending a $20 course fee just to help us with the, the consumables that occur from year to year. Once again, we'll need to provide the teachers training, they do that over the summer, it's a two-week intense course, some just minor textbooks will be needed, and then, of course, the supplies. Once again, there will be some grant monies that are still available from the Kern Foundation, our Anderson Foundation grant, and then district dollars that will be needed to support that course. The second one that you see is Advanced Placement Statistics. Currently, in our math department, we have one Advanced Placement course, that's AP Calculus, so they would like to offer a second Advanced Placement course in statistics, which is really the study of variability. Once again, the teachers, the teacher that's, that has stepped forward that would like to teach this will need training, again, now this summer in order to provide the course, and then there will be some textbooks that will be needed for that course as well. The third course, Mandarin Chinese, again, is a third in the sequence, we've had Mandarin Chinese I, II, now this will be Mandarin Chinese III, anticipating somewhere between one and two sections, but looking forward to adding the third in that sequence as well. Again, looking at just some minor supplies and/or textbooks needed there. And then the fourth one, I have to correct myself, I found a typo, we currently offer AP Lit and Composition. What we're proposing is adding AP Language and Composition. I have it correct in the course description, but not in the title, so we're looking at adding AP Language and Composition in the Language Department. This would be the second, then, Advanced Placement course in English. Just want to state, though, that Language Arts is currently under curriculum review, and so Laura Love, Principal at the high school, and I are working with them, this is what we think we're going to offer in 2011-12, but there is a slight chance it may wait until 2012-13, based on just some things that happen over the next few months. Once again, for Advanced Placement, there is required training in order to offer that course, and then some textbooks that would be needed again as well. And these courses were presented to Learning and Program, and Barbara, I'm sure can talk about the recommendation that was made there.
Yes, so the Learning and Program Development Committee did approve, recommended that this be brought forward to the board for approval this evening. So, with Sandy's recommend, no question, Dan?
I have a question regarding the PLW class in Chinese. Are those, both of those, my question relates to the interest and participation in the other, is it strong, still strong in those other?
Yes, we're doing very well in both of those, mhm. And looking at some really strong, especially in the second courses, and so we should be having, we should be doing very well in those third sections, yes.
Thank you.
Madam President, on the Language, Advanced Placement Literature and Composition, that's an add-on, a little, more than what we have right now, and you said that wasn't taken away, something we have to replace it with this?
Correct. We currently offer, and this is where I've got, we currently offer the literature and composition, we're adding language and compositions, two different AP courses that are offered by the Advanced Placement, by the College Board.
Okay, and so we're, but you are revamping it, looking at what we all have right now, but basically that will, this is just adding on to it, not really replacing, not taking out?
No, not replacing.
Okay.
Great.
Is there a motion to approve adding these courses to the 2011-12 course guide for the high school?
Madam President, just a quick comment and then a motion. I just, I'm highly supportive of these three courses, I think they integrate very well with HSD 2025, and I think it's doing a lot to, you know, move our district forward as far as Advanced Placement courses, et cetera. Having said that, then I would move approval of the 2011-2012 course proposals.
Motion by Mark?
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are on to ratification of union contract with the Educational Assistance, Media Assistance, Health Assistance, and Nutrition Services employees. Tim?
Okay, before you is the 2009-2011 collective bargaining agreement between the school district and the WCEA, which includes regular and special ed assistance, media and health assistance, and child nutrition employees. The, the agreement, we, we spent a lot of time going through the agreement, I think we started back in roughly January, February of 2009, and I'd probably just direct your attention to page 11 of the contract, because there's been very little change, no benefit, no change to benefits, but what you're looking at is, on page 11, the increase in wages. If you take July 1st, 2009, there would be a step if earned by years of service and a 0% increase per sell, so no increase per sell for July 1, 2009. Then, moving forward to July 1, 2010, there is no step increase and no increase on the sell from July 1, 2010 until December 31st. Then, January 1, 2011, there is one step if earned by years of service again, and then 4% increase on the sell. So, effectively, that 4% is for a half here, so effectively, just approximately a 2% increase.
Are there questions?
Madam President, I, no questions. I guess, first, I do want to thank, you know, our negotiating team, I know this was a long, arduous process, didn't actually realize, Tim, it went back that far, early, early '09. Seems, it's amazing. I know, of course, this was a new bargaining, it should probably contribute to some of that. And anyway, do want to, you know, commend the team for their long efforts and doing, doing some good work to achieve most of the district's goals. It's probably no surprise that most of the people just tabled that, I think it's important that we keep our wage increases in line with the, the general economy. Our federal government is running a trillion-dollar deficit, we've got three-plus billion here in the state of Wisconsin, and we'll have local problems here as well. So, with, with that, the wage increases proposed exceed my, my comfort level, and I really can't support a wage increase of the size that's proposed in this contract.
Thomas, questions? Any other questions for Tim about the agreement? All right. Is there a motion to approve or ratify this agreement?
Madam President, I move to ratify the union contract as proposed.
Okay. Motion by Lynn, is there a second?
Uh, second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Dan. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We are into the consent agenda, the consent items, if someone could make the motion and read the amount of approved expenditures?
Madam President, I move for approval of the consent items, including expenditures in the amount of $3,381,995.74.
Okay, motion by Dan. Second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Consent agenda is passed. We are into committee reports, and Learning and Program Development Committee is first on the list, so bear with me. So, the, this committee met just a few weeks ago, and we had three items on the agenda, the new courses was the first item on the agenda, which the board has agreed to adopt this evening. I'm going to do this in reverse order. The, the last thing we talked about was, we got an update from Nancy Toll on staff technology survey results, and I think this is the right way to characterize it, the survey results have improved since the last time they took the survey. There's still some work that Nancy and her team have identified that they would like to do to help our staff members continue to leverage the technology that we own, we believe that there's still some room for growth there. And the last item that was on our agenda was a review from Sandy, Peg Shoemaker, Corey, and Principal Love at the high school around our 2010-11 district goals overall, and they really highlighted four different areas for their district goals. One was continuing to improve those places where we, we can collaborate as staff. The second area that they talked about was the goal around high school of the future. They also, we also talked about the goal for implementation of HSD 2025. And finally, there was a brief discussion around space for learning for the district, so that was the Learning and Program Development Committee meeting. Any questions? All right. The next committee report is Facilities and Grounds, and it looks like, Mark, you're going to handle that.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Holland was not able to be here tonight. The Facilities and Grounds Committee met last week, two-item agenda. First up was Mr. Erickson's update on the middle school addition, and I know, I know at that time, we were, despite some weather events, we were largely, largely on schedule and on budget, and I don't know if things have changed over the last week, but we're, I think we're moving along pretty good, disruption has been minimal, and I guess at this time, they call it quite, quite a success, so I just hope we maybe catch a break with the weather here. And then we had a closed session for discussion of the purchase, possible sale or purchase of public properties.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And if you want to roll right into the Personnel Committee meeting, then?
And we'll roll right into that, the same meeting the Personnel Committee met and had only a closed session on our agenda, specifically dealing with specific personnel matters and compensation and benefits for our non-union support employees.
All right, thank you, Mark. With that, we are at that point in the agenda where we would respond to any citizen's request to speak, and it looks like we have one. Okay, we have a request to speak from Jill Kivie. Jill, you know the drill, if you'd step forward and give us your name and your address.
Jill Kivie, 880 Willow Ridge, 1. I am the president of the Paraprofessional Nutrition Services Unit, and on behalf-
Oh, Jill, can you step forward, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I am the president of the Paraprofessional Nutrition Services Unit, and on behalf of our unit, I would like to thank you for the ratification of our contract. Our bargaining team would also like to encourage the board to be a part of the district's bargaining team in future contract negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. If I can have a motion and have someone read the specific language around the closed session, we will not be returning to open session this evening, so we will not return to this room.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 Parent 1, Parent C, for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of an employee, deliberation, compensation, and benefits for non-union support employees, deliberating to prepare for negotiations with WCEA Hudson Teachers Union, and deliberating- for negotiations with WCEA Hudson Teachers Union, and deliberating about the sale and or purchase of public properties.
We'll do a roll, oh, a motion by Lynn. I do, Lynn, if I can have you restate that, we are going to eliminate Section E on that, in terms of, we're going to eliminate the discussion around the sale and/or purchase of public properties in the closed session this evening.
Yikes.
No. All right, so we had a motion by Lynn, second by Dan, we'll have a roll call vote.
Robson, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Van Loon, aye.
German, aye.
We are adjourned.